Good evening. Welcome to the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Churchill County Planning Commission meeting. I call this meeting to order at seven P. M. We'll have the pledge of allegiance at this time. If you please stand. Commissioner Bunyard releasing the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item three. Is there any public comment on any item not on the agenda today? None heard. Agenda item number four. Verification of the posting of the agenda.
The agenda was posted on February eighth in accordance with statutes and the Churchill County Code.
Thank you. Agenda item number five. Approval of agenda, and it will be a revised agenda. We'll put item number eight in front of item number six. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, Zach Bunyard, for the record, I move that we approve the agenda as revised.
Sir. Motion been made by Commissioner Bunyard, second by Commissioner Nelson, to approve the agenda as revised. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number eight will be the election of officers for twenty twenty-four. We'll start with the chairman position. I am currently the chairman. Is there any nominations from the commission for chairman?
I'll like nominate Eric again for, uh, for the chair. Doing a great job.
Second.
Okay, is there any other nominations? None heard. The nominations have closed. Eric Blake has been nominated as chairman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. We now have the election of vice chair. The current vice chair is Scott Nelson. Is there any nominations from the commission for vice chair?
Mr. Chairman, I move Scott Nelson. His current vice chair would reelect him.
Is there any other nominations? Scott?
Oh.
Good. There's no other nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Scott Nelson will be the vice chairman. Moving on to item number six, agenda item number six. Verification of notification of all landowners in accordance with NRS and the Churchill County Consolidated Development Code.
Efforts to reach out to landowners wasn't made.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven. Approval of minutes of the meetings held on A, excuse me, item A will be request the planning commission to decide if good cause has been found for the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, and November eighth, twenty twenty-three minutes not being approved within forty-five days as there was no quorum for approval at the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, planning commission meeting, and January tenth, twenty twenty-four, planning commission meeting was postponed due to inclement weather. Does that just need to be read into the record?
Maybe the good cause has been found.
It is determined by the commission that good cause has been found. We'll move on to approval of the minutes held on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three workshop and meeting minutes of the public hearing on November the eighth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting held on the twenty-fourth and November eighth to be re... What do we say in here?
Just approved.
Just approved.
The minutes.
Okay, here we go.
Second.
The motion been made by Commissioner Capote, Pacoti, and Commissioner Bunyard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Excuse me?
Let's make a motion on that, on both of them.
Yes, at the same, we're doing it at the same time.
We'll know why they were delayed some more.
You think we need one?
That's what we said.
Okay. Can we include that all together?
Sure. If you want to, if you want to include it all in one motion, I would just ask that there be a motion by the commission that the minutes for October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and November eighth, two thousand twenty-three be approved and that there was good cause for not approving them within forty-five days.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the twenty-fourth of October and the eighth of November and to say that there was good cause to delay those meetings due to inclement weather.
Okay, the revised motion has been made by Commissioner Pacoti and second by Commissioner Bunyard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number nine, old business. Item A, consideration and possible action. Review of special use permit previously granted to Shelby and Kim Cecil, C and L Auto, for a vehicle service and repair business located at six twenty South Creek Road. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application? Please come forward. As you take a seat there, there's a microphone button on the bottom of that. Once it turns green, or push it and turn it green, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Cecil.
Shelby Cecil, six twenty South Creek Road.
Thank you. Director Spross, do you have an update on this application?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris Spross, for the record. So, the Cecil's or C and L Auto was granted a special use permit back on November nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. They had some issues with getting some building work done. So, in October of twenty twenty-two, they requested an extension. A code allows the staff in the planning department to grant an extension, which was done. There were still some things that needed to be done, and a second request for an extension was received on November, on October eleventh of twenty twenty-three. That is outside of the ability of the planning department to grant, and so it comes in front of the planning commission. So, I think at this time, it would be best for the commission just to find out from, from the Cecil's exactly what has been done and why the, the extension is required.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to and provide us with that information?
So, we have just about everything done except for having the building itself completely finished. And so, I don't know where that falls in with the special use permit part as far as what our, our application that was approved, the very... One of the requirements was talking about the building, and so everything else is done. It's just finishing the interior of the building for the ADA requirements.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Chris Spross, for the record, just for a little clarification, some of the conditions on the, on the special use permit, just so you have an idea of what was required, because that was quite some time ago. Outdoor storage of inoperable vehicles shall be inside a visually screened vehicle storage fence. A few months back, I believe, I went by and you guys have that, that complete. Lighting must meet dark skies. The signage is limited to that, what is described in the application. The community development fees must be paid. A landscape strip shall be provided to meet the landscaping and friction zone requirements. Abandoned and inoperable vehicles should not be permanently accumulated on the property whether inside or outside of that fenced area. The, the business shall maintain an operable haul trailer with winch capability or similar piece of equipment capable of delivering vehicles abandoned by customers back to them. The business shall require customer authorization to leave abandoned vehicles. The number of vehicles allowed to remain on the property and storage yard will be limited to twenty-five. Any alteration shall be made to upgrade the septic system to commercial standards, and then state and federal permits need to be in good standing, and then operations must be conducted in a manner that don't create a nuisance. So, based on that information, that, that is what was required as part of the conditions of the S U P.
Are you familiar with those items?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, would you like to speak to any of those items?
Um, every, it's, everything is done. All those conditions are met except for the building being completed for us to operate.
Okay. Do you have a plan or a timeframe of when you'll get asked for CFO from the building department?
Um, I'm currently, I'm done with my rough framing of the office and bathrooms. I'm currently working on the electrical and finishing out the plumbing, and then that will be inspected, and then just the drywall.
And the reason why you're asking for the extension is just for the interior work of the building?
Correct.
Everything else has been met?
Yeah, we weren't sure how, where we sat with the requirements other than the interior building being completed, because our electrical is not done. So, like the, the lighting, where specifically on two B of my application, it says lighting must meet dark skies. Obviously, I don't have any lights up yet, so I'm meeting those, but I do have the ones that I turned in to the planning department initially to be approved will be the ones that go up, and they do meet the dark sky.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's just the finishing, the building.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Chris Spross, for the record, just to point out, the building itself is not a condition that's on a part of this special use permit, but because the lighting is going to be a part of that building, that's really the only condition. It sounds like that's not being met. So, the building itself, whether it's finished inside or outside, is not part of this. And if the outside was done and the lights could be hung, then we wouldn't need to be here for an extension, because then they have fully met all the conditions of the, of the special use permit. So, okay, I don't know if you guys can do that. If the outside of the building is done and you can hang lights?
Yep.
Then you really don't need to have an extension on this temporary use permit.
So, then at this point, we're just asking for the final approval to be done and...
There, there really is no final approval from us. Special use permit, basically, you have conditions that you have to meet. Once you meet those conditions, you fulfill the obligation of the special use permit, and there's no closeout or anything like that. Now, that differs from the building. Obviously, building permits you have to deal with.
Yeah, we still have to finish with the building appointment.
But as, you know, with, with the lighting not having been done yet, it may, it may benefit to, if you do intend on extending this, extend it for thirty days, sixty days, something like that, to the point where you can get the lights hung. Something like that. That's just my suggestion.
Okay. What is the timeframe that you can meet to have the outside lights installed and operable?
Can they be operable without being inspected by Ray?
I don't know.
Well, we plan on having the electrical done within the next month, probably. I'm kind of doing a lot of it myself in between working the business, working at the sheriff's office, and all the family dynamics that just drastically changed for us in the last few months. So, I'm trying to juggle my schedule with all that as well. So...
Okay, can you give us some, a number?
Three were...
Yeah.
Three months?
Three months?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Three months.
Okay.
We'll put it out there. I'm asking for three months.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from the commission? May I hear a motion to extend or deny?
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson, for the record. I move that we approve an extension for the special use permit for Shelby and Kim Cecil at C and L Auto at six twenty South Creek Road. Assessors' parcel number is zero zero seven eight five one zero eight for three months.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Nelson and second by Commissioner Pacoti for an extension of three months. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
And Chris, just confirming that once we've met that, we don't need to come back? We're, we're done?
As, as, yeah, and, you know, once you have it done, let us know. We'll come by. If you ever fall out of those conditions, then you'll be subject to code enforcement. But as, as long as you maintain the conditions of that special use permit, you're fine.
Okay, sounds good.
Agenda item nine, old business. Item B, consideration, possible action, review of temporary use permit previously granted to Aaron and Catherine Murray for property located at twenty-four hundred Lucas Road. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this application? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Push that on the circle. There you go, on that thing. Make it green.
Aaron Murray, just on the microphone itself, a little flashing mic on the mic.
Oh, thank you. Modern technology. Aaron Murray, twenty-four hundred Lucas. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Director Spross, do you want to update the application?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Murray received a temporary use permit back in September of two thousand eighteen. At the last planning commission meeting, the planning commission approved a renewal of the permit to go in, to coincide with when the building permit expired for the work that was being done, and requested this review in February of two thousand twenty-four. So, that's why we're here today. So, again, I think at this point, the application says that the work is still in progress and should be completed by August twenty-fourth. Obviously, if the, the building permit expires, extensions can be granted, but at this point, I think it would be good for Mr. Murray just to let you know what has been done and what remains to be done.
Thank you. Mr. Murray, can you explain, or give us an update on your project?
Yes, I can, sir.
And please make the microphone closer to you.
Monday, I had Jara from the building department come out, and she commented that we had made excellent progress since the last meeting. I suffered a setback of about a month and a half. We were moving some furniture, and somebody knocked my legs off of under me, and I hit the concrete face first. And when I came to, the EMT were trying to keep me going. Anyhow, it cost me about a month because I couldn't walk. So, we have put siding on, painted, sealed, porch, brought electricity in, put multiple circuits, lights, outlets, et cetera, et cetera. We got our heat pump yesterday, which is what we're progressing now to install, and we've got about a half a dozen more electrical circuits. And Jara said she'll come back and sign it off as soon as that's done. We're moving forward from that onto the water system and get that finished, and then put sheet rock in, get insulation in, and as I stated in October when I was here, we plan on having it completed by summer, and that's still a fact.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, Jara extended the permit until September.
Okay, thank you. Commission have any questions or discussion? None heard. As for motion to extend or deny?
Mr. Chair, Zach Bunyard, for the record, I move that we extend the, the temporary use permit to coincide with the building permit to September first of two thousand twenty-four.
Motion been made by Commissioner Bunyard, second by Commissioner Pacoti, to extend until to coincide with the building department's permit in September of this year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Agenda item ten, new business. Item A, an application for abandonment filed by Ralph and Deborah Mills for property located at forty-five seventy-two BBN Way.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the application? Looks like you're already green, so state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Mills, two two five five, Check the Road.
Thank you. Director Spross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is an application for an abandonment of a road easement, of a road and other easements. The use listing is residential. The applicant is Ralph Mills. The owner is Jeff Christiansen, trustee of Spring Valley Trust. The site is forty-five seventy-two BBN Way, which is APN zero zero six dash two three one dash six nine, and is comprised of two point two nine acres. The designation in the master plan is agriculture, and the zoning is A five. So, some background on this. This application was reviewed at the May twenty twenty-two meeting. The planning commission recommended denial at that time. The applicant appealed to the board of county commissioners, and the board of county commissioners convinced the applicant to withdraw the application and resubmit it at a later date after the development plans for their dairy was underway. The applicant has the dairy underway and has resubmitted the application. The staff report is based on the previous staff reports. Some things may sound familiar. So, this application proposes to abandon the rose easement, road easement, and associated parallel drainage and utility easements through this property at the end of BBN Way. The road currently ends in a cul-de-sac, but the easements continue through the east end of the property and provide access to the adjacent lands to the east. BBN was created by a cluster development. North of this cluster development, Newell Mills also created another cluster development along Shekler Road and Chavez Drive, with the conservation easement located adjacent to the one for BBN, for the BBN Way project. Recently, the easement was moved to a different location. This conservation easement property extended south to abut the subject property, and at the end of the roadway easement proposed to be abandoned. But this conservation easement was different in that it was only for thirty years, half of which that time has passed. On expiration, the farm property which abuts the road easement could be further developed. Since the previous application, a number of developments have taken place. The Mills family has renamed Chavez Drive as Farmer Way. The Mills family worked with Deputy D. A. Sanford to remove the north conservation easement for the Chavez Drive lots to facilitate the dairy construction and replace it with a conservation easement on the adjacent property to the east. The Mills family began construction of the dairy near the end of Farmer Way, thereby obstructing its extension southwards towards BBN Way. And the removal of the conservation easement no longer obstructs the extension of BBN Way, making its extension eastward towards Lima Lane easier. So, NRS and the county code requires two public hearings. The first is before the planning commission, who makes a recommendation to the board of county commissioners. The second hearing is before the board, who makes the final decision. Notice of this proposal was provided to other departments. The fire marshal had no objections. The road supervisor recommended not abandoning the easement. The county surveyor reviewed the proposal, and A indicates that the abandonment is complex enough to need careful description by licensed surveyor, and B that the drainage and utility easements need to be established to continue southward rather than to be simply cut off. The road supervisor, as mentioned, and the public works director recommended against abandoning the easement and connection through this property because it would result in material injury to the public. What we mean by that is the county always needs to think about future road and utility networks to serve the community in the future. The BBN road easement was purposefully established, like it is, to provide road and utility connections east of BBN Way, the development. Development by just a few owners to the east would allow the creation of an east-west connection to Lima Lane lying approximately halfway between Shekler Road to the north and St. Clair Road to the south. Exploration of the above-noted conservation easement in a few years will allow the farm lot to be developed again, and thus, the north-south road connection between BBN Way and Chavez Drive and Shekler Road is possible. Since the previous application, the applicant has, has obstructed this route with the new dairy and removed the conservation easement, so the property can be further developed. And finally, the land division purposely established this property as it is in a way to still provide a viable home site. The site is currently has two point two nine acres, of which a half to three quarters of the acre is build, three quarters of an acre is buildable. This is adequate to locate a home and accessory structures. The portions of this site encumbered by the road and parallel easements will be nonusable for structural uses until such a time that the road is constructed in the future. Because of all that, staff does recommend, once again, denial. Should the planning commission decide to approve, there are certain conditions that would be part of that approval. Number one, the applicant shall provide an exhibit prepared by a surveyor licensed in the state of Nevada that will accompany the order, and that clearly illustrates the revised easement situation. The map must be drawn to the satisfaction of the county and the county surveyor. Number two, the abandoned road easement shall be the portion lying east of a north-south line measured sixty feet directly east of the center point of the turnaround on the third cluster development parcel map for Ralph P. and Deborah K. Mills, document number four oh eight oh fifty-seven. Three, the applicant must establish replacement easements for the abandoned drainage easement and utility easement such that they coexist with the eastmost ten foot of the truncated road easement. And finally, the order of abandonment shall be prepared for execution by the chair of the board. With that, staff will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, he covered it really well. Other than, you know, the potential for that road does go through our property also. It deadends into the property we're building the dairy on. The next property to the east is also our property, which currently does have the conservation easement on it. It's what, three thousand feet from there to Lima Lane. So, I don't know the probability of building a road at that expensive. I know I built the road that's there, and I wouldn't do it again, and wish I hadn't.
Okay. Do we need to show on the monitor what we're talking about there, like where he says the road is or anything with the pointer?
Dean, you want to use the pointer and kind of...
Just so there's a clear understanding to everyone?
Sure. What is it you'd like to know?
Just where he built the road and like where you're taking away the easement, and like where the, where a proposed road would go or something?
That, that's okay.
Okay.
Oh, great. Come on. It's not gonna stay. Hmm. I'm holding it. Nothing else here. Yeah, it's not gonna hold on so I can point it at anything.
The current turnaround's at the end of the proper line on, um, between nine and ten is where the, the turnaround's at.
How it's working?
Operator error is what I want.
Gee, thanks. See if it'll...
Pull it tight.
All right. So, this is BBN Way, and the partial questions, this triangle at the end. Mr. Mills would like to abandon everything east of the cul-de-sac, which that portion ends at that diagonal against the, the, the property with, that he's putting the dairy on. So, uh, this property has a conservation easement related to the BBN Way development. This property used to have the easement, the conservation easement for the Chavez Way lots, the small lots up along Shekler. The easement was removed from this part, from that property and put on the next property in the, Joe can correct me, it's in the east half of that parcel. So, Mr. Mills was referring to some part of this parcel that is not developable, but that would be the east side. So, previously, the connection for BBN Way could have gone to Chavez going northward. That's no longer feasible because of the dairy, or it could go eastward over to Lima Lane. Does that cover everything you need, or would you like to know more?
No, just wanted to get a visual, and then the audience could have a visual exactly what we're talking about, so everybody's a clear understanding of what's going on.
Mr. Chair, Jeff Goings, for the record. Mr. Mills, I did take a drive out there and kind of looked this over. Part of what is in the staff report is, is that you guys, that you have begun construction on the dairy?
Yes.
Is one... Because when I was out there last, I didn't see any footings. I saw nothing.
They started moving base this last couple of weeks.
Okay. And for the record, could you kind of possibly have Mr. Patterson locate where that, where your dairy fittings and all that is now going to be located? I guess what I'm trying to get to is, is when I was looking at Chavez, Chavez would have, if you extended it down, could have tied into this corner down here.
Right.
But if the dairy is actually built on what could be extended, you've basically kind of blocked that from ever happening.
Right. Yeah, the dairy's being built about where, where his pointers is, about right up that, uh, south property line of that sixteen parcel.
Okay, so it's right on the property line there, is what?
Yeah, the milk house will be right there with the milk tank turnaround right in that area.
With, with that, it, it doesn't really, for future, that could have potentially come down tied into this east-west line on the, uh, on that oh-six-two-three-one-three-nine and continued on over to Lima, which may have been able to. But with that dairy barn going there now, you kind of have isolated that piece of property and makes it a little tough there now.
Correct.
Without that easement, how, I mean, because again, in the future, I see that easement, I see that road needing to extend to Lima or someplace, or we got a dead-end road out there in the middle of nowhere.
Right. To where the current easement is, yeah, and it, it also, that's a lateral that is at the north edge of that property, which then covers a drain ditch. And it's another drain ditch halfway through the next parcel, and then lateral proceeds at that diagonal across there. So it would require multiple drain ditch crossings and lateral crossings to actually build a road there.
Is there any further comment, discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Zach Bunyer for the record. So on that, Ralph, you guys own all the property to the east, correct?
Dead next to eighty, yes.
And doing that. And therefore, I mean, it is a dead-end road. I mean, potentially, I guess you could say it's not going to be, but probably in my lifetime, it's gonna be a dead-end road.
Correct.
And doing that. And then I thought about this, maybe this is for the county. I know on the previous adopted subdivisions on Coleman and on Birch Lane, those aren't county-maintained roads. And so therefore, you know, in future, or those developments, the county's not gonna maintain them. And with this not gonna really going anywhere, I don't really see a reason why we couldn't abandon the easement personally.
Chris, do you guys currently maintain BBN Way at all?
I think, I believe it's a non-maintained county road.
So you have an easement, and how long, how long has that easement been in place?
Fifteen, sixteen years or something like that?
Oh, wait.
Since the, since that cluster, since that cluster or that conservation easement was put in place and that is more than halfway done, so.
Is it paved?
Is it what?
Is BBN paved?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe it had to be paved, right, for the development?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, including the turnaround there at the end, the cul-de-sac turnaround's paved too.
That was all for county code and all that, correct?
Correct. Yeah, and just for answering the drainage easement, the actual drainage for that whole area is between parcel seven and eight is where it drops into the drain ditch. The gradient flows back around that cul-de-sac and goes back. It doesn't proceed to the, to, towards the lateral, the drain ditch. The lateral obviously blocks the whole field at the end of that parcel ten, along the entire north edge is the, the lateral.
And I guess my next question was, real quick, and then I'll be done. But, uh, so if we approve the abandonment and recommend it up, as I mean, it's gonna go to the county commissioners, are you aware of the conditions of the approval then?
Yeah, as he announced, yes. Yeah, the mapping and everything. Matt Steve Bell did this original subdivision. I haven't talked to him, but I propose him to do whatever mapping's required.
So if I'm looking at this right, if that abandonment was to be approved, you'd have a dead-end road on BBN to the cul-de-sac. If anything was to happen in the future on any of the properties east of that, which are now are in conservation easement, but could potentially be moved, and they wanted to, in the county, at some point, wanted to extend that road from that point out to Lima, you'd have another dead-end road. Because you would, this easement would be gone, and you'd have a, so you'd basically have two dead-end roads with no connection between the two. So I kind of see where the county's coming from on this, in this, because you really, by abandoning that easement, you create a dead-end road on BBN and a potential dead-end from Lima back to BBN from the east coming west. Because we can't do anything off of Chavez anymore because now the dairy's gonna be there, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. They really, if you follow, I think where, what I see here is I see that you end up with this island out here with dead-end roads coming in, and, you know, and, and it just seems kind of almost like some of the roads that I've driven around on the valley here before and wonder why that ever happened. This is what I'm looking at. So I, I can see why the county is kind of in the denial on this because it just potentially shuts everything off right at BBN.
Right, other than Lima isn't a through road either. It just simply connects St. Clair and Shekler Road. As St. Clair then at BBN connects to, to St. Clair, right before it runs into Shekler. So the whole, that whole quadrant is an island.
Yeah. Well, I guess I'm looking in the future, though. At some point, those two pieces, that, or that piece right there, that eighty that is to the east of Chavez, if it was continued, could potentially be developed at some, somewhere along in the future, as well as anything east that you possibly don't own. And if there was a road that was brought in there to, you follow what I'm, you follow what I'm seeing there?
Other than that, it's a density issue out there, knowing how much that road costs, and it's an A-five zone with that limited number of parcels. The cost to put in a road to access that smaller numbers of parcels makes those parcels prohibitively expensive. As I still have, you know, the money I spent on developing those ten parcels, they still haven't reached market value of current market, and that was fifteen years ago. And I'm sure road costs have gone up significantly then, so unless this is in a zone that is going to have county sewer and water and high-density potential properties, you're, you, at the most, if you're a five-acre zone, accessing sixteen parcels, eight parcels more likely. So it's a pretty low-density access number of houses in that area.
Director Spross, do you have further comment?
Yeah, I, I've received comment from the road supervisor, and BBN Way is a road that, the road that the county does maintain. They do maintain BBN Way.
Thank you. Do you have any further?
Which I could be on that, Chris, I mean, because that was kind of the thing back then when they did that, that the county was adopting all that. It's kind of more here recently going forward that they haven't been maintaining, right, on some of these roads?
Well, I, I guess the easiest way to explain this is, is the road department doesn't get any property tax to put towards roads, so they only get gas tax. So it's difficult for the, the county to pick up a bunch of roads that they have to maintain. So we've gotten into a lot of, um, uh, county maintenance agreements with developers for them to be able to take care of their own roads. However, a, a, a few of the most recent developments had plans that were developed back in two thousand and four, two thousand and five, and it had been written into those plans, into the tentative and final maps, that those will be county-maintained roads. But we're, we're trying to get away from that. Because if you build a road that's got three houses on it, it's, it's, it's pretty cost prohibitive to pick that up as a maintenance. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. This one is maintained.
That one is maintained, according to the road supervisor, yes.
Yeah, they did some crack seal on it.
Do you have any further comments from the county, on the county, from the county concerning this matter of why we shouldn't abandon this, or?
Well, again, we, I mean, it, it's, it's the county's responsibility to look into what's gonna happen in the future. And, 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 you know, I have, I have nothing against this project. I, I just look at, and, and that was our position previously, that with the potential for this, this conservation easement to expire in, in thirteen or fourteen years, and the possibility of development happening there, this could be really prohibitive for that. If this was one of the conservation easements that we've had in the past where it does not have a sunset clause, I think this would be a completely different conversation.
But I could be wrong. You could reestablish an easement if you wanted to divi, say the property owner wanted to go ahead and subdivide. You could reestablish that easement going forward for that road, correct?
I'll, I'll just say, Mr. Bunyer, you could if it's the same owner. But if this gets a house built on it and sold, then it'd be up to the new owner.
So it's just the one parcel then?
It's, it's just lot number ten, and you can't see the lot numbers, but lot number ten is, is the triangle in the back.
So I mean, and we're sitting here talking in theory that, you know, that all the other property owners all the way to Lima are gonna agree to that also, you know, so, I mean, I mean, yeah, it impacts this property. But to keep that easement, that road easement that we're thinking that would go all the way to Lima, thinking in the future of all the development, I mean, we've got quite a few other easements that you would have to establish at that point, too.
Jeff Goings for the record. So I, my argument would be that if you abandon that easement and then you built on there where the current easement is, you would not be able to come back and get that easement because now you're gonna have a structure that's obstructing that easement through there. So, yeah, I, I mean, I, I kind of see what we're talking about here, but if you, if you abandon that, sell that, or make that parcel and build it out, now all of a sudden you have a building across where the easement was, and now you're not gonna be able to get that easement back in there.
Mr. Patterson?
Dean Patterson, for the record, just wanted to point out that, um, can you go back to the, the air photo picture? Yeah, so along the, um, south edge of the picture is a parcel number ending in thirty-nine. That, that runs all the way to Lima Lane. So if that one develop, one property owner decided to do something, then the road could be put in all the way to Lima Lane. It would have to cross the tip of Mr. Mills' property. That's all I wanted to point out.
On the tip of, tip of both of black parcels?
It could connect to this easement across, but it would also have to go across the tip of Mr. Mills' property.
That's a drain ditch in that corner.
So if you built the road that way, you would have to cross parcel forty-seven and parcel seventy to get to thirty-nine. Do you agree with that? So the, so you'd have four people that would have to be in agreeance at the current state, four owners to, to make a road, is that correct?
It'd be two Mills' property, and then I think it's Gomes', but I'm not sure.
Chris Rogney owns the other parcel.
I'm sorry, did you say, you say Rogney owns the thirty-nine parcel?
Correct.
Okay. And, and you have the seventy parcel to the north?
Correct.
Who owns the, um, property, who? Kapucci, okay.
It's the next one east.
And Kapucci actually comes all the way over to Lima Lane at, at some point, so, yeah.
Yeah, there's us, Rogney, and, and Kapucci. And then that parcel below, I don't know if it's been sold, but it was Laka. And that whole corner is where a lateral and a drain ditch has come north-south. Drain ditch comes across the south line of our property and tees into the drain ditch that continues south. The lateral diagonals across Rogney's field, and then that's a drain ditch halfway across our property that turns and goes north and then follows it over to Lima Lane.
Conservation easement is now moved to that seventy right there?
Correct.
What, is that a, is that a conservation easement to perpetuity?
No, it's gonna expire in the fifteen years.
Oh, it expires, it's the one that expires in fifteen years?
It just moved from one to the other.
What is the, what, what's the one on the fifty, well, what are we there?
Fifty-seven, yeah.
Yeah, that one? Is that, that's got a conserva, no, I'm not really, fifty-seven really doesn't come into play here. It would be, it looks like the?
It's in perpetuity, though, I believe on that one.
Forty-seven is?
Yeah, forty-seven. Or the fifty-seven, the one, that one?
That one there?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry, just to clarification, forty-seven is also because?
Forty-seven was moved to seventy.
When, okay, so there's no conservation on, conservation easement on forty-seven at all?
We just moved it. DA Sanford and attorney addressed that.
Paul Pocoddy for the record. Chris, did any of the other landowners have anything to say about this? Were they given notice at all?
Uh, we didn't receive anything from any other landowners, no.
I'm just curious because it would require a lot from them, owning the other properties, to be able to do that. Hypothetical road.
That, that's true.
So I'm wondering what their stance is.
That's true, but, but I always like to look at not only the current owner, but somebody that may purchase it in the future.
Is there any further comment from the commission? Is there any public comment concerning this matter? Would the applicant like to add anything?
No, other than that we're, you know, the process of putting a dairy in's been extensive and expensive, and the concept of dairy properties is to maintain as little access and proximity to nearby housing as possible. So, um, as far as future development, yeah, we'd not be happy about it and resist it if we could just from the potential complaints of moving in in proximity to a dairy facility.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the purpose of getting rid of the easement? Bottom line.
Make that parcel partially more usable. I'm in the process of building a house on it. Permit's gonna be applied for, maybe has, for my other son that's moving to town. And it will, the house is planned to be located in the existing building area anyway. It would just be allowed possibly in the future to, uh, landscape it, put an additional, possibly a shop at some point in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any further discussion from the commission? None heard ask for a motion to approve or not approve the abandonment of the easement. Or, excuse me, to approve or not approve moving it forward to the county.
Mr. Chair, Zach Bunyer for the record. Based on the information provided in the staff report and heard denied, I move to find that criteria found in Churchill County Code sixteen-point-zero-eight-point-zero-five-zero have been met, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request to abandon a portion of BBN Way road easement and parallel easements that pass through parcel ten and the third cluster development parcel map for Ralph P. and Deborah K. Mills, doc number four-zero-eight-zero-five-seven, APN zero-zero-six-dash-two-three-one-dash-six-nine, and that the lie, the lie east of the existing road turnaround, and, and that if approved, the specifics of the abandonment- road turnaround, and that if approved, the specifics of the abandonment should be further refined as described in the conditions approval as listed in the staff report.
The motion has been made to, that the conditions have been met. Do I have a second? Motion dies lack of a second. May I have a motion to deny the abandonment of the easement?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. I move based on the information provided in the application, the staff report, and heard tonight, I move to find the criteria found in CCC sixteen oh eight oh five oh have not been met, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners deny the request to abandon a portion of BBN Way Road easement and parallel easements that pass through the parcel ten of the third cluster development parcel map for Ralph P. and Deborah K. Mills, document number four zero eight oh five seven, APN oh oh six two three one six nine, and that lie east of the existing road turnaround, and that if approved, the specifics of the abandonment should be further, I guess we're continuing on there, that's it.
Motion has been made that the conditions have not been met for the abandonment of the easement. Is there a second? I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two that the conditions have not been met to abandon the easement.
Well, I mean, that was a recommendation, so...
Okay. The recommendation of the planning commission is to deny that your conditions are not satisfactory. You can appeal to the county commissioners.
I'd like to appeal to commissioners, please.
It won't be an appeal, it'll be, this is a recommendation, and so...
Yeah.
So we're gonna recommend to the commissioners that we do not find that good cause. You can speak with Director Spross about moving forward.
Yeah, you'll just have to come to the Board of County Commissioners meeting and...
Right, let me know what's on the agenda.
They make the final decision.
They make the final decision.
This item will be on the March seventh Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Thank you.
And he does, does he need to call someone before the, he just can't show up, right?
No, absolutely. It's going to be an agendized item on the Board of County Commissioners, so Mr. Mills just needs to show up.
On March the seventh?
On March the seventh, yes. It's not, it's not an appeal, it doesn't have to go through that process. And then just a question from over here. Then after Board of County Commissioners hears this again, it will come back to this board again, correct? That's incorrect. The Board of County Commissioners will make the final decision. You've made a recommendation to them. They'll make the final decision, and what they say will be the result.
Thank you, everybody.
Agenda item ten, new business. Item B, an application for a zone change filed by Hooper Management Family, LLLP, and Cheryl Bancroft Trust for property located off of Gamo Drive.
Hello, this is Cheryl Bancroft representing Hooper Management Family, LLLP.
Thank you. Director Spross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this application is a zoning map amendment from R one to originally R three. That request has now been changed to change that from E one to R two. The use listing is vacant and industrial. It's an abandoned, a vacant piece of property. The applicant is Cheryl Bancroft. The owner is Cheryl Bancroft and Hooper Management. The site is APN zero zero eight dash three nine one dash two eight and two nine. It is on Gamo Drive. There is no physical address, but it is west of the golf course. It's comprised of six point one one acres and twenty-seven point nine seven acres respectively. The designation on the master plan is urbanizing, and the existing zoning is E one. The proposed change to zoning is change the thirteen acres along Gamo Drive to R two. So this application was previously reviewed at the August twenty twenty-three meeting. The county staff had recommended denial or tabling the project until a traffic study was prepared to accompany the application, because at the time that was being requested to R three. The planning commission convinced the applicant to request tabling the application for six months to provide time to do the traffic study. The applicant has proposed changing the request from R three to R two, and has asked to forego the need for a traffic study, and the staff report is based on the previous staff report with some updates. So the applicant's requesting the change, to change the zoning on two parcels from the existing E one single-family zoning district to a mix of E one and R two multifamily zoning district. The applicant has submitted a boundary line adjustment to change the line between the existing two lots with the intent to change the existing east-west line to a north-south line. The proposed R two zoning district has an upper density limit of ten dwelling units per acre, which is much less than the sixteen per acre allowed by R three. The application indicates plans for about seventy apartment units resulting in a density on thirteen acres of about five to six units per acre. However, R two zoning only allows two, three, and four plexes on one lot, so large complexes on one lot is not allowed. The primary issue for this proposal is the function of Gamo Drive and the US fifty intersection during rush hour. So it's the planning commission's responsibility to find two findings. One, the first finding is before a zoning map amendment may be recommended for approval, the applicant shall prove evidence to the commission and board concerning physical use of the land. You have the application's responses, as well as the staff's responses for that question as part of your packet. The second finding is the commission in forwarding a recommendation to the Board for approval of a zoning map amendment or consolidated development code shall make certain findings. There are three findings that need to be met. The information there is on your packet. I do want to point out the biggest area of concern was the publicly maintained road, specifically the Gamo Drive. That's the primary concern for this proposal. It's a county-maintained road that is in good shape and of a configuration that's capable of handling the increased demand. However, its intersection with US fifty is notoriously dangerous, and the railroad crossing near the intersection complicates the intersection's safe operation. A possible additional difficulty is that the main access road for the development appears to be planned adjacent to the agricultural supply store, which may place it within the queuing distance from US fifty, and project traffic would likely fill in any available queuing out to the access road. Drivers would then be incentivized to make unsafe maneuvers to get on to Gamo Drive. For the previous proposal, the department's head has had substantial concerns with the traffic generated by the project potentially developing at an R three density. Staff and the planning commission required a traffic study before recommending approval, and the applicant asked to table that project until it could be done. Since then, the applicant has inquired about R two zoning and if that would eliminate the need for a traffic study. Staff agreed that the chance and magnitude of negative consequences is greatly reduced with the R two, so it would be acceptable to defer the traffic study to the development application stage. In this case, it would be a subdivision. I just want to note that the later traffic study might still determine that the need for very costly improvements that could affect the viability of that project. Based on that information, I just want to reiterate that we are not eliminating the traffic study. We are just saying the traffic study needs to be done prior to the subdivision map, whereas this, with the R three, we wanted it prior to the zone change approval. Staff, having reviewed the application, does recommend approval. There are no conditions, again, this is a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything further? And you understand the conditions that have been spoken?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions or discussion?
One quick question. Previously, you were looking at R three, and then you made the change to R two. Can you kind of give us a little background of why you made that change?
I'm sorry that I'm so naive, but I didn't know there was an R two. I just wanted to put some units along there, and my original plan, I had told them that I was going to probably put six, you know, a six plex, and maybe ten to twelve of them. And I guess maybe I had a gentleman working for me that said that we'd have to ask for R three. I no longer have him working for me because he didn't seem to know all the rules the way he should have. So I didn't know better. I would have asked for R two to start with.
Thank you.
So you, Paul Pecoti for the record, so you do understand that there will be a required road, you know, traffic assessment at some point?
I do. I did go and talk to the people in Reno that do traffic studies, and he told me that he didn't think for the density I was asking for that that should be necessary, and he also felt the queuing distance, he told me the queuing distance was viable, that it would work. So I didn't think we would need a traffic study. I do understand that they're still asking for that, but at a delayed time.
Dean, my understanding is R two is ten units per acre, up to.
That's correct. It's up to ten units per acre. But the other part of R two is that you can only do the two, three, and four plexes, so each one has to have its own lot, and that means a subdivision. Mrs. Bancroft is planning to do a subdivision on the remaining E one area, and so my guess is you do them both together, or have them phased, or something like that.
Is there any further comment from the commission, discussion? None heard. Is there any public comment concerning this matter? Please, ma'am, please come forward to the podium. There'll be a little round disc there, and a little microphone symbol to the podium, please, ma'am, 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 to the podium.
There's a podium right over there. There you go.
Do I need to go back?
No, you should.
There's a little, there's a little disc right there that has a microphone, make it green.
Okay.
And state your name and address for the record.
There you go.
Rose Marie Braicher. I live at twenty-eight ninety-one Country Club Drive. So my concern is the density, when I was here at the last meeting that Cheryl Bancroft was asking for, isn't cohesive with seventy potential units across the street from where I live. Before, when they were trying to do, when a subdivision was proposed in this area, so my questions would be, there was hazardous waste that was a big concern along with the traffic study, and just, isn't there something less than R two for the E one? It just doesn't seem cohesive with the neighborhood. Also, I think the letter we got in the mail from the planning commissioner said something about it would be hooked up, the subdivision or these units would be hooked up to the current water and sewer, and there is no sewer where we're at. We have, we don't, we have septic. So those are my questions. I'm definitely against subdivision where I am at.
Mr. Chair, in terms of the water and the sewer, there is water on Country Club Road, there's water on the intersection of Country Club and Gamo. Mrs. Bancroft is aware that her property is going to need sewer. That sewer would have to run up via a lift station up Gamo and tie into the existing manhole that's up on Rice Road. So sewer is not there currently, but the developer is aware that whatever infrastructure is not there to suit her needs has to be installed by the developer.
Thank you. That answers that question for you. You said something about hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste was brought up previously when a subdivision was gonna be done in this area, and I believe Cheryl didn't know anything about it when we talked. But it was brought up when it was a concern. Well, I've been told by Dean that I have to do a soils sample or something, so that will be done before I move forward.
Prior, Chris Spross for the record, prior to any construction of any subdivision, it's going to be required to do a geotechnical report. The soil will be analyzed for its compactability, it will be analyzed if there's any hazardous material in that soil, and obviously, anything that's determined as a result of the geotechnical report would have to be remediated by the developer to make sure that the subdivision would be free and clear of any so-called hazardous materials.
What kind of hazardous materials are we worried about over there?
Because they're, a normal geotech report's not gonna test for benzene or any of that stuff.
I have never, unless this was prior to Ms. Bancroft's previous application, I have never heard the term hazardous material. I just really wanted to point out that if there was an indication of hazardous material that would be, and you are correct, it's not gonna be identified in the geotechnical report. However, if there are certain odors that are coming out of there, then NDEP, somebody would be called to make sure that that site would be free and clear. Again, this is the first time I've heard hazardous material. I realize that part of that property to the south has got a railroad track, but I've never heard of any talk of hazardous, hazardous materials there.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. Dean, you can maybe enlighten us here. So in the R two, it allows for two units per acre. In the, in the E one, or I mean, the E, excuse me, in the E one, it's two units per acre. In the R two, it's up to ten units per acre. Those units are gonna be either two, three, or four plexes, okay? In the E two, in the E one, is there a limit on the size of those two structures that are allowed on that acre? Are they gotta be maximum of four plex, or can they be greater than a four plex? It's only allowing two...
So in the E one, they're just single-family?
Single-family.
But you can do two per acre?
Two per acre, okay.
Now, as you know, you could do a PUD and do more, but Mrs. Bancroft's not talking about that, so...
I just wanted to clarify, I wanted to see what the density was gonna be there, okay?
Okay, yeah, and then for the R two area, you're gonna have something plex on each lot, and so if it's, so you can just do the math, if it's a four plex on a quarter acre, that's sixteen, so you can't quite do that, but you can do the math to make it come out the way you need to.
Thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Dean Patterson for the record. So we received a letter from, I believe, the Building Department noting that NDEP has identified the Carson River as a place where you might have mercury contamination due to sediment in the river. So Ms. Bancroft may have to work with NDEP to figure that out. I'm not really sure what they do. The property had been used for a earth and materials transportation location and maybe processing. I can't remember, but I think it was magnesium or something along, one of those M words, but Mrs. Bancroft probably knows what that is. And so that may have been what the woman providing comments a minute ago was talking about.
Thank you. Sir?
Hello, my name is Corey Tolman, two seven seven five, Country Club Drive.
Go ahead.
I've got a few things. First off, reviewing the application, there's a handful of words in there that are difficult to read. I'm a little surprised with the, just the magnitude of the application coming through that some of those words are, there's words that are crossed out and kind of scratched over, so that part concerns me just a little bit. Also, I'm really concerned about the intersection of Gamo and Highway fifty where it intersects. I've been at Country Club Drive for just over fifteen years. I grew up on Rice Road. I grew up on Rice Road as well. So, I've lived in that area for a majority of my lifetime. Regardless of what any traffic study will tell you, I can tell you that's an extremely dangerous intersection. I've seen personally three T-bone accidents coming off of Country Club. Right now, in the morning time, that intersection will back up well into the storage sheds, especially around the 7:45 to 8:30 timeframe, early in the morning. It's just a hot intersection as it is. It always has been. It has been forever. Adding, adding that level of residential there, I just, doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. It makes me really nervous. I'll, I'll move on to a couple of the things that are on my mind. We're talking about three-story multifamily buildings? Is that, that was mentioned in the application?
No.
That would have been part of the R3 zoning that has been withdrawn. The R2 zoning does not allow multifamily buildings.
Okay, so that's what's currently in the application.
Four plexes, but not apartment buildings.
So, right now in the application, it actually states three-story buildings in there.
Does he have a current application? Was the day she do a revised application? She just, so she didn't do a revised application? So, the application you're looking at is the original?
Okay.
So, after that, she came in and revised her wants? And that's how we got to what we have today?
So, that current application's not, not there? Is that, is that correct?
Would that?
She's modified it to be a lesser zoning than what she initially asked for.
So, that would not have been updated.
The original application was R3, which allows for three-story buildings. She's reduced it now to R2, which allows for up to a four plex.
Okay.
And I apologize. I never wanted, maybe the guy that was working for me did that, but I never asked for a three-story building.
It seems a little ill-prepared at the moment for the magnitude of the project that we're talking about.
So, she submitted her original application?
Yes, sir.
And it came here and we tabled it to, for a different time, which is today. And in the meantime, her and the staff worked together to rework her request. And I'm only assuming that there was nothing else made public other than just on the website. There was nothing printed that would be current information, I guess.
So, is there a new application that supersedes that one? Or is it just a matter of the difference in zoning request? Does?
We're just asking for an R2.
It's been modified to have a
R3, okay.
A lesser density zoning. And that's, that's also within the commission's purviews. They could, someone may request one thing and they may say, "Well, we don't think you should have it that intense." We'll approve something less intense. And so, that just goes in the same line.
So, some of that information can change in our office?
Okay.
And would not be like on the printed paper?
Where would we find that as that information changes?
Is it on the, it's on the staff report?
You're here right now. It's in the staff report. There's, there's no new application. There's been discussions since then. It's now being brought here. So, any new information is being shared here at this time.
Perfect. Thank you. A couple of other things that's, that's on my mind is I fear lighting could be a pretty decent concern. Just the lighting from the H&amp;L storage sheds alone. They put in some lights there and they've, you know, about a year later, they put some caps over them so that the light didn't project high. But just those lights alone are pretty intrusive. I own two homes on Country Club, one on the north side and one on the south side. My mom lives in the, in the home on the south side. That's right in her backyard. Just, just the lighting that's there currently is blinding enough to where you cannot just open your blinds at night. Water upgrades were discussed a little bit. I'm a little bit concerned and I don't think it's been mentioned yet. All the homes on the south side of Country Club Drive, yes, there is water there. But all those folks, they're actually using, they're not using the county water system. They are currently using all wells. They're all on well and septic. Everybody there on both sides is septic. But on the south side, though the water is there, it's piped. But it's, nobody is utilizing the county water system. Those wells are right around 20 feet deep. They're not, they're not great. They're work, but they're not, they're, they're not great. So, I'm a little bit worried about the contamination that could result from that. The property on the south side, this property is probably, I'm guessing, you know, on average, right around 10 feet higher than that. So, it's just, it's got a natural slope to it. Access is also a concern. Will there be access coming from the golf course area as well? Or is it all off of Gamo for this, for this development?
It's designed off of Gamo. We put in an easement when we did the boundary line adjustment.
Please address the commission with questions and answers.
I'm sorry. When we did the boundary line adjustment, Loomis designed an easement to have a road go in from Gamo, past the queuing spot.
Chris Bros for the record, I just want to clarify something quickly. Right now, this, this is a zone change application. There has not been any plans submitted to the county in terms of what this development may look like. You know, there's talk about doing two and three and four plexes. We don't know the quantity of any of those. We don't know where the roads are going to be. We don't know how, exactly how many single-family homes are going to be in E1. This is simply the request for the zone change to be able to put a development together that subsequently will be in front of this planning commission for a decision as well. But in terms of what this development looks like, I think the, not to speak for Ms. Bancroft herself, but I'm sure there's a conceptual idea of what somebody wants to see. But there have been no plans submitted to the planning department.
I felt it was important to get the zoning proper before I paid Loomis to design a plan. So, that's why I'm here trying to get the proper zoning. I obviously didn't ask for the zoning I even wanted initially, and I apologize for that.
Thank you. Do you have any other concerns?
No, I think I'll just end with my, my biggest concern really is the traffic. That intersection is a huge deal already. I just want to reiterate that. Also, as you exit Country Club Drive, already that turn coming around is a very difficult turn. When folks are going to speed limit, it's already difficult to see them. If folks are going a little bit quicker, which is just naturally happens, you come out of that stop sign and many times, and I do it a lot, you come out of that stop sign to hang a left onto Gamo coming from Country Club Drive. That's a, that's a hairy spot. It just, it just naturally is. Adding that additional traffic where those, it just sounds, it sounds like a lot to add all that traffic in right there and turning in and out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chris Bros for the record, and I just want to, I just want to add to that. You know, it's everyone's concern, and it was mentioned in the staff report too, that Gamo in that intersection is everyone's concern. And when a traffic study gets done, please understand that NDOT has to be involved in that. Obviously, this is an intersection with Gamo and 50, which is NDOT's purview. And so, they're going to have a pretty big say in what's going to happen at that intersection, whether it's a light or what that may be. That may complicate this project. That may complicate the queue that's created by having a light. But we won't know until that actually gets done with all the players that need to be involved in reviewing and analyzing that traffic control, that traffic study.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please come forward.
Andy Harris, 2955 Country Club Drive. Just looking at the numbers, it looks like we're looking, we're trying to get another 115 dwellings in there. That's our current infrastructure, like in that area is not going to handle it. Yes, there's water already there, but the 14 houses on that block that use that water have stressed it so much that it's broken twice in the last year. We've been without water for at least a day. The road's there. It's not painted. It's not ready for that much traffic. I just, a lot of stuff would need to be done in order to do that. And that's at the proposed E1 R2. That's 115 units. Even if it's all E1, that's still, what, 75?
I have 80 water hookups that I've paid for for years. It was originally designed.
Ma'am, please address the commission with questions and answers.
I said I have 80 water hookups. I, when I loaned money on it originally, I understood there was a tentative plan that was tentatively not final approved for 80 houses on it. And that's why I've been paying for 80 water hookups all these years.
Thank you. Is that all your concerns?
The light pollution is another concern.
Okay.
Access, another concern. But those aren't going to be addressed until they plan out the subdivision. The road, the intersection, and water are all major concerns that would have to be addressed.
And they will be.
Even if it was all E1, it would still, it would fit better with that area because there are mostly half-acre lots, acre lots out there now. Anything more dense than that, and I think it's just going to overstress the system. And your nearest convenience is a mile away at Walmart. So, there's, there's not much out there to support. That's my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? None heard. Would the applicant like to address any of the, answer any of the concerns that the public stated, other than anything that you have not already?
I just thought the fact that Walmart was walking distance to part of it was a good thing, not a bad thing.
Okay. Does county or Director Spross have anything? Does the commission have any further questions, concerns, discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff Goings for the record. This would be mostly a comment, probably, maybe, there might be a question falls in here eventually. But, so, from what I can see here, I, just the people I've spoken to on this board, and these are all concerns we have as well, folks. That, we know that is a dangerous area right there. I've grown up here, lived here my, basically my whole life, and that's a tough spot right there. The railroad track also creates an issue there because you get that little island between Reno Highway and the railroad tracks. So, I'm going to, I'm trying to find the silver lining in this. And potentially, the silver lining is before they could ever move forward with any kind of project there, it's going to have to come before this board again. And it's going to have to come before many other entities, which could potentially improve that road that's always been a problem. So, it could potentially help in that before this project could ever move forward, those concerns that you have, that I have, that everybody has, would have to be addressed before that project could even get going. So, the zoning change that is going to potentially happen or not happen here tonight is just the first step. So, there's going to be plenty more time to look at this. And I do know that there's concerns with traffic studies and how you can adjust traffic studies. But I think there's enough concern there from the public as well as a group up here that before anything was moving forward in that R2, if it goes R2, would have to be addressed before this board and probably the county commissioners, I would suspect, would allow anything to move forward. That's just my opinion. I'm just giving you my opinion at this point.
Is there any further discussion? None heard. As for a motion to approve or deny? The recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record. Based on the information provided in the application and the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria, or I move, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.060 has not been met. And I move that we deny it at this time because I don't think we have enough information without traffic studies to make the determination as to whether it's been met.
I'll second that.
The motion has been made by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Goings. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those oppose?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is opposed three to two. Do I have another motion to approve or deny?
Based on the information provided in the application and staff report and heard tonight, I move that we find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.08.060E have been met and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the zoning map amendment for Cheryl Bancroft on APN 008-391-28 and 29, subject to the requirements that A, the area zone R2 shall be the area displayed on the proposed boundary line adjustment map accompanying the rezone proposal. And B, the zone changes does not become effective until the said boundary line adjustment is recorded.
Motion has been made to approve by Commissioner Bunyard, second by Commissioner Pecoti. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries three to two. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to bring something beautiful to Fallon.
Agenda item 10, item C, an application for a variance from a side setback requirement of Churchill County Code 16.16.02.01, filed by Angela Diane Moyle for property located at 1405 Soda Lake Road. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the application?
She's on her way.
Stuart Moyle, 1405 Soda Lake Road.
And Angela Diane Moyle, 1405 Soda Lake Road.
Thank you. Director Spross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the application is for a variance. The applicant is Angela Diane Moyle. The owners are Stuart and Angela Moyle, Angela Diane Moyle. The site is 1405 Soda Lake Road, which is APN 008-191-11, which is 4.7 acres. Designation and the master plan is urbanizing residential and the zoning is A5. So, the applicant is seeking a variance from the 25-foot setback requirement to facilitate the replacement of an existing mobile home which fails to meet the current setback standard. The existing home was placed in approximately 1971, which was prior to the establishment of the side setback requirement. The new home will be approximately two and a half feet wider and four feet longer than its predecessor. Despite the increase in dimension, the new home's placement will extend west and south, ensuring it does not encroach any closer to the northern property line than the existing homehead. Due to the narrowness of the applicant's parcel, alternative locations for the new homes are limited, especially considering the need to accommodate the septic system in the driveway, which cannot be relocated. Staff has received a letter of support from the neighboring property to the north, which is approximately 120 feet from the Moyle's home. So, the commission has four findings that they need to determine on. Four findings are listed in your staff report with the applicant's answer to each and staff's comment on each one of those. Again, this new home will sit essentially on the same footprint as the old home. And I just want to make sure that that is clear. Based on the information, based on the review that staff had done on the applicant's comments on the findings, staff does recommend approval. There are two conditions that are part of this approval. Condition one, the approved side setback is 20 feet from the property line, and it only applies to the replacement of the existing home. it only applies to the replacement of the existing home. The normal setbacks apply in all other situations. And two, the approval of this variance expires one year from the date of the final decision. Construction of the garage slap slash shop must begin before expiration. Uh, with that, I, uh, staff would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add? Thank you. Does the commission have questions or discussion? Is there any public comment concerning this matter? None heard? Ask the commission for a decision.
Mr. Chair, Zach Bunyard for the record. Based on the information provided in the application and the staff report and heard tonight, I move that we find that, that the criteria found in Churchill County Code sixteen point zero eight point zero nine zero F have been met, and therefore approve the variance from the side setback requirement for Angela Diane Moyle at fourteen oh five Soda Lake Road, APN zero zero eight one nine one dash one one. This approval is subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Bunyard, seconded by Commissioner Nelson. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Agenda item ten D, an application for a zone change filed by Jared Card and Jesus Mariz Carina for multiple properties located at the intersection of Carson Highway and Beasley Drive. Please come forward. Make the little microphone thing green and state your name and business address for the record. Just hit the microphone itself. There at the bottom?
A little light, there you go.
All right, Jared Card, twenty-five twenty-five Beasley Drive.
Thank you. Director Sprouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this application's for a zoning map amendment from C1 to industrial, um, and as part of that, staff also recommends rezoning the remaining C1 property to the south. The use listing is a trucking business and construction contractors, uh, specifically well drilling. The applicant is Jared Card of Card Trucking. Uh, the owner is Jared and Suni, Sonny, Card, and JDLN Enterprises, which is, um, Heu, Jesus Mariz Carina. Also, Galen and Margaret Hines and Endot. The site is APN zero zero seven dash one seven one dash five two, five three, five four, and seven nine, and that is twenty-five ten, twenty-five twenty-five, and twenty-five fifty-six Beasley Drive, and is approximately five point two six acres. And also the adjacent portion of US fifty and APN zero zero seven dash one seven one dash five six, which is ninety-eight twenty-seven Carson Highway, which is approximately three and a half acres. The designation in the master plan is agriculture and hazen swingle belt bench planning area, and the existing zoning is C1. So since twenty twenty, uh, the, the primary applicant, Jared Card, has operated a trucking business on one of the C1 zone parcels and a section of the industrial zone parcel located to the north. Trucking is not an allowed use in the C1 zoning district. In May of twenty twenty-three, Jared Card obtained a special use permit for an off-premises outdoor storage yard on the industrial zone parcel, and the discrepancy was discovered. The SUP was subject to a condition that he must address the non-conforming trucking use on the C1 parcel. This could be achieved by other rezoning from C1 to industrial, or by removing the trucking use and ensuring compliance with friction zone standards between the C1 and the industrial parcels. The, uh, special use permit also imposed a condition for landscaping, which was one parking lot tree and a ten-foot landscaping strip along the frontage of Beasley and the Carson Highway, and screening the perimeter and in between phase one and phase two within a hundred and twenty days. While some progress has been made towards the landscaping with the addition of boulders, as of February sixth, twenty twenty-four, the conditions have not been fully satisfied. This application seeks to correct, correct the problem of the trucking use on the C1 parcel as required. The second applicant, Jesus, holds us two special use permits for operating a well-drilling and portable toilet rental business on three of the subject parcels. These permits granted in April of two thousand and eighteen included conditions for landscaping and screening. While some progress has been made towards the landscaping by displaying antique drilling equipment, as of February sixth, the conditions have not been fully satisfied. So the primary applicant, Jared Card, is operating a non-allowed use on one of the parcels and proposes a zone change from C1 to industrial to remedy the issue and bring the parcel into conformance with Churchill County Code. A change from general commercial, which is C1, uh, to industrial would be consistent with these surrounding industrial and heavy commercial C2 land uses. There are no plans for a change in use on any of the subject parcels, though a change to industrial zoning would ensure that future uses remain consistent with the surrounding areas. Churchill County is also including two adjacent C1 zone parcels in this request, the first being APN zero zero seven dash one seven one dash five six owned by Galen and Margaret Hines totaling approximately point four nine acres, uh, and the second being a three point oh seven acre portion of the US fifty passing through or adjacent to the affected properties. The reason for this is that approving the Card, uh, and Mariz Carina zone change would result in one small C1 parcel along with the segment of highway, and we refer to that as spot zoning. Um, section sixteen oh eight oh dot, uh, point zero six zero, section D of the Churchill County Code empowers the planning commission to consider additional properties for change extending beyond those initial, initially included in the zone change application. So there are several, um, actually just two items that need to be considered. Before a zoning map amendment may be recommended for approval, the applicant shall provide evidence to the commission and board concerning physical use of the landing zoning concurrently existing in the general vicinity. Um, there are applicant statements along with staff, um, responses to those statements in your packet. Um, there's also three findings that need to be met, uh, and, uh, the commission in forwarding a recommendation to the board for approval of a zoning map amendment or consolidated development code amendment shall make, um, those findings. Um, there are three listed in the packet, um, and it states how those findings have been met. Uh, based on the review and investigation that staff has done, staff does recommend approval. Um, there are no conditions as this is a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And with that, uh, I'm sure staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Does the commission have any discussion or questions? None heard? Is there any public comment? None heard? Ask the commission for a decision to approve or deny.
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson for the record. Based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code sixteen zero eight zero six zero has been met, and therefore recommend that the county, that the Board of County Commissioners approve A, the zoning map amendment request for Jared Card and Jesus Mariz Carina to change the zoning on APN zero zero seven dash one seven one five two, five three, five four, and seven nine from C1 to industrial; B, a change in zoning for the adjacent US fifty right-of-way from C1 to industrial; and C, a change in zoning from APN zero zero seven one seven one five six owned by the Hines from C1 to C2.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Nelson, seconded by Commissioner Bunyard. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Agenda item ten E, a reversion of acreage map application filed by Alan Hughes and other property owners. The proposal would revert properties located in block fifty-two of the Hazen Township map, and it is in conjunction with a request to abandon adjacent streets and alleys. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the application?
Alan Hughes, seven sixty-four Nevada Street, Hazen, Nevada.
Thank you. Director Sprouse?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just a, a point of clarification, um, item ten E and item ten F, um, they need to be, um, heard at the same time, a, and so this, uh, application that we're gonna be discussing is going to affect both E and F, so I just wanted to make that clear. So application number one is the reversion, uh, to acreage for multiple owners. Application number two is the abandonment of multiple road right-of-ways, rights-of-way. The use listing is residential and industrial rail services. Uh, the applicants and owners are Alan Hughes, uh, TRP Properties, which is Omaha Track, Julie Scott, and Shona Williams. Uh, the representative, uh, is Belle Land Serving, Serving. Um, the sites are four ninety Reno Highway, which is APN zero one zero dash two nine one dash zero six and zero seven, uh, and that is the Hughes Properties. Uh, five hundred Reno Highway, which is APN zero one zero dash two nine one dash zero two and zero eight, those are the Scott and Williams, um, properties. Uh, seven thirty-eight Nevada Street, which is APN zero one zero dash two nine one dash zero nine, which is also a Hughes property. Seven sixty-four Nevada Street, which is APN zero one zero dash two nine one dash zero four, which is also a Hughes property. And APN zero zero nine dash two five one dash seven four, which is associated with, uh, ten oh six Nevada Street, and that's TRP Properties or Omaha Track. The designations in the master plan is industrial and the hazen swingle belch planning area, and the zoning is A10 and industrial. So this project attempts to make the old hazen townsite lots created in nineteen fi, nineteen oh five into more usable lots for today's methods of development. It proposes to revert small lots into larger lots and abandon certain adjacent county road lands into reverted lots. Reversions to acreage of a couple of lots are normally simple and fast to approve, however, this case is not simple because it involves multiple large and small lots. Due to the complexity, staff, the county surveyor, and the title company recommend that a record of survey be done to clearly show the resultant parcels. There are multiple property owners involved in this application. Uh, Mr. Hughes owns most of block fifty-two. Uh, Scott and Williams jointly own two small lots of block fifty-two. TRP Properties owns the Omaha Track Rail Tie Processing Site east of block fifty-two, which as noted above, has already undergone a reversion and abandonment process to consolidate the many parts into a larger property. The property proposes a reversion to acreage application to merge multiple lots already owned by the individual owners into a smaller number of lots. And at the same time, the project requests the county to abandon the adjacent unused right-of-way lands and incorporate them into the adjacent lots. Uh, none of the rights-of-way have roads or utilities installed, they are undeveloped land. Um, in your packet, um, there is a clear definition of the reversion proposal for all the different, um, property owners and properties. I just wanna point out a couple of things. There's some difficulties with reviewing both of the applications at once. Um, the Nevada NRS provides procedures for reversion to acreage. Uh, one difficulty is that it requires, one, that a meets and bounds legal description of reverted lots be submitted with the application, and two, that future conveyance use the meets and bounds legal description of reverted lots as opposed to referring them to parcel A of map Y. Doing so has been, has been proven difficult because the original hazen townsite map is so old, it has poor level of detailed information and that is unsuitable for meets and bounds descriptions of the reverted lots. In addition, it's unsuitable for the future conveyance of the property using modern land conveyance practices. After extensive communication with, between the county surveyor and the project surveyor with input from the title company, legal descriptions of the reverted lots were developed that are acceptable for use in the abandonment, which will simultaneously change the lots again by adding the adjacent road segments. The record of survey and associated updated deeds can also provide good legal descriptions for the resultant lots. Because of the complexity of both the reversion with its difficulties and the abandonments of multiple segments, staff recommends that the application also include a record of survey to show the resultant parcels. After reviewing the proposal, staff, the county surveyor, and the title company also recommend that new deeds for the property should be developed to provide the clear legal description of the resultant lots, and that they are then illustrated on the record of survey map. Simultaneous, simultaneously, developing the new deeds and records of survey help resolve problems with the unsuitable reversion to acreage legal descriptions. In considering these two applications, the reversion to acreage criteria need to be met, and the abandonment criteria need to be met. So for the reversion of acreage, uh, the criteria review, um, talks about the setbacks, the easements, the water in the sewer, and that's all outlined in your, uh, packet. In the conditional development approval, um, there's also criteria, conditions that need to be met. Uh, I won't go through the entitled ver, the entire verbiage you have in, in your packet, but it needs to conform with the master plan, it needs to be compatible with the existing adjacent properties and uses, uh, and needs protection of the public health, safety, and general welfare, and that adequate public facilities and, and services are available to the development. And finally, as a part of the review and analysis of the development request, findings for conformance with the goals and objectives of the code and the master plan must be made in order to recommend approval. Uh, as far as the reversion of acreage after review and countless hours of conversation with surveyors and title companies, staff does recommend approval. Um, I wanna point out the combined, uh, recommend, uh, recommended conditions of approval for both the reversion to acreage and the abandonment are gonna be talked about at the end of the report. Um, and that the recommended conditions of approval are based on approval of both requests, uh, recommended conditions would change if one was denied. And then as far as the abandonment, the application proposes to abandon the multiple county-owned road rights-of-way adjacent to the Hughes TRP properties and Scott Williams parcels. The rights-of-way are undeveloped with no road structures or known utilities, they are not needed to provide connectivity through an area, and they are not needed to provide legal and physical access for resultant parcels or other adjacent lands. Again, uh, the, the planning commission may recommend and the board may approve the abandonment if it determines that the public will not be materially injured. It should be noted that the master plan includes goals and policies as described under reversion to acreage section above that supports projects such as the abandonment and the reversions to acreage to improve the developability, developability of the hazen townsite lands. The notice of proposal was provided to the other county departments, uh, the fire marshal had no objections, the road supervisor had no objections, the county surveyor reviewed the proposal and approves of the abandonment, but also indicates that the abandonment and reversion to acreage are complex enough to need a record of survey with new deeds. Uh, NV Energy, CC Communications, Southwest Gas also indicated no objection to the abandonment. The Churchill County Public Works Director also has no objection to the abandonment. Uh, staff, the road supervisor, and the public works director recommend, recommend approving the abandonment because the public will not be materially injured so long as the conditions of approval ensure that land ownership and deeds are not clouded by the action. So, based on that information, staff does recommend approval of the abandonment, and the combined conditions, um, are as follows. Number one, changes shall be made for compliance with Churchill County Code, including but not limited to: A, provide blank spaces for document numbers on the order of abandonment and new deeds, which will be recorded before recording the map and filled in on the map; Two, adding note information regarding the deed error for the Scott Williams property similar to the Hughes deed error, Hughes deed error; C, correcting the name of the reference document number nine thirty-one in the surveyor's certificate; and D, correcting typographical arrow placement and other minor errors. Number two, to ensure compliance with NRS reversion to acreage and abandonment requirements, approval is subject to the following. The proposed reversion to acreage and record of survey map shall be recorded after the order of abandonment with the orders document number referenced on the map; and B, new deeds using the resultant lot legal description shall be recorded before the recording, before recording the reversion to acreage and record of survey map with the deeds document numbers referenced on the map. With that, Dean will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does the applicant have any further they'd like to add? Thank you. Does the commission have any questions or discussion? No discussion heard? Is there any public comment? No public comment, ask the commission to make a motion. We'll be making a motion on items E and items F of the agenda-
Thank you.
-for approval, to recommend to the county commissioners or disapproval. For approval, to recommend to the county commissioners or disapproval.
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson, for the record. Based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 1604040C and Churchill County Code 1604050A have been met, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the reversion to acreage application for Alan Hughes, Julie Scott, Shona Williams, and TRP Properties for the multiple properties included in this application, and that if approved, the combined conditions of approval for abandonment and reversion to acreage that are listed in the staff report be required. The combined recommended conditions of approval for both the reversion to acreage and abandonment are provided at the end of this report.
We can do them one at a time, but the conditions that have been outlined here are for a combined approval, and so I'll just recommend to the board that if there's any intention of not doing the approval of both, that you discuss that now before you pass this motion.
Okay, none heard. I assume-
No motions for both, from me.
Do we need to read both?
Second.
Just, yeah, just pass this one. We'll pass the next one.
This motion has been made to approve Item E of the agenda, or, excuse, yeah, Item E of the agenda. All those in favor? The motion's been made by Commissioner Bunyard, second, or, the motion's been made by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Bunyard. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carries five zero. Now may I have a motion for approval of Item F?
Mr. Chair, Scott Nelson, for the record. Based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the Churchill County, or criteria found in the Churchill County Code 1608050 have been met, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve the request to abandon county road right-of-way lands shown on the proposed reversion to acreage and record of survey map accompanying the application, being portions of Utah Street, Tahoe Avenue, and the alley through Block 52, all established on the Hazen Township map, document number 391, and that if approved, the combined conditions of approval for abandonment and reversion to acreage that are listed in the staff report be required.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Goings for Item F. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries five to zero for the recommendation complicated. Thank you. Agenda Item 10F.
You'll notice that this is F twice, so you might notice for folks that-
This will be item, agenda Item 10, the second F listed on the agenda, and it will be a parcel map application for two maps creating seven lots filed by NevDev LLC for property located on Desert Hills Loop. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the application?
Hello, my name's Steve Bell, 100 Fillmore Way, Reno.
Thank you. Director Spross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this application is for a two serial parcel map for seven lots. The use listing is single-family residential. The applicant is NevDev LLC, the McCrory family, and the owner is NevDev LLC. The representative is Steve Bell from Bell Land Serving. The site has no address. It is APN 008-176-82, which is 16.48 acres. It's between the endpoints of the existing Desert Loop roads. The designations, master plan is urbanizing, and the zoning is E1. So this application project had its tentative parceling plan reviewed by the planning commission at the September 2023 meeting and approved by the Board of County Commissioners on October 5, 2023. These two maps implement the plan. So the two proposed parcel maps will implement the approved parceling plan and will result in seven lots. Parcel Map 1 will create three small lots and a remainder lot. From that remainder, Parcel Map Number 2 will create four lots. The configuration eliminates the previously planned internal roads and connects in favor of short stubs on each end of Desert Hill Loops, that loop that ends in cul-de-sacs serving the new lots. This reduces road costs for the project. The applicant proposes to construct the entire development in Phase 1 with both maps recorded at the same time, once the road segments are built or bonded. There are certain design standards that must be met. Setbacks, easement, lot sizes, those are all in your packet. There are five criteria that must be met. Those five criteria are outlined in your packet, along with comments from staff. We did receive correspondence from the building department. That correspondence outlined that there's no current soil profile and percolation test data for this map. Soil profiles and perk tests shown on the tentative map were observed in February of 1998 and may not reflect the current conditions. Suitability of the parcels for the placement of septic systems may not be determined without individual soil profiles and percolation tests being performed. So basically, the building department is saying that each individual lot will require percolation tests prior to placement of septic systems. Based on the information in the application and through the review process of the application, staff does recommend approval. There are conditions as a part of that approval. Condition number one, changes shall be made for compliance with Churchill County Code, including but not limited to: Changes to labels on road easements and improvements shall be made to be consistent with the final decision on offers to grant easements and dedicate lands and facilities. B, changes to the Churchill County Commissioner's certificate shall be made to be consistent with the final decision on offers to grant easements and dedicate land and facilities. C, roads servicing, roads serving the development shall be constructed or financially guaranteed before recording the maps. Any portions of the project roads that are off-site of project land shall be constructed at the developer's expense and offered for dedication to the county through the appropriate processes. E, water dedication requirements must be met prior to recording the map. And F, any typographical errors and errors in certificates and notes shall be corrected, including the planning certificate referenced to the approved variance. Number two, any final changes required by the county surveyor shall be made prior to recording, including but not limited to the following two changes. A, changes shall be made for accurate display and placement of all monuments and of all markers at edges of road easements, canal easements, and building envelopes. And B, curve data shall be provided. With that, staff will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Bell, do you have anything to add?
No, that was all explained.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions or discussion?
I just had one quick question. So on the motion, so we're, they're not going to dedicate any lands for their parcel, or all the parcels are put in, is what it is?
Can you repeat the question? What do you mean by dedicate land?
So like how we had to have any open space or nothing like that, right? That's what, that's what we're rejecting is that-
Yeah, this is not, this is not a PUD or a subdivision. This is a serial parcel map, which is why there's two maps in this process. So you get three with a big remainder, and then you can build four on the other one.
And that's why we're not making them dedicate any lands, right?
Correct.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any public comment? None heard? Ask the commission for a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chair, Zach Minner, for the record. Based on the information provided in the application in the staff report and heard tonight, I move to find that the criteria found in Churchill County Code 16.04.040C and Churchill County Code 16.04050A have been met for two parcel map applications implementing a previously approved parceling plan to create seven residential lots, and therefore recommend that the Board of County Commissioners approve A, or, to A, approve two parcel maps entitled First and Second Parcel Map for NevDev LLC to divide APN 008-176-82 into seven lots. This approval is subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. B, accept the offer to grant easements identified on the maps. C, reject the offer to dedicate lands for Desert Hills Loop. And D, accept the offer to dedicate road facilities for Desert Hills Loop.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Bunyard, second by Commissioner Pecoti. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Motion carries five zero for the recommendation to the county board. Thank you. Agenda Item 10G, review and discussion of the current master plan and of the 2025 master plan update. Director Spross.
I am going to give my time to Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commission members. Dean Patterson, for the record. So this item is about providing an orientation to our upcoming 2025 master plan update. So every five years, we update the master plan. So it's that time. Some of you may have been here as we were finishing the last one. That last master plan update was very comprehensive. It involved a lot of updating old wording, reorganizing, and clarifying a lot of the text in the master plan. It was comprehensive enough that there's not a whole lot that needs to be done, excuse me, needs to be done this time. Consequently, we don't expect a Plan Y update, but rather making minor updates to specific parts of the plan that are reliant on data, to update that data, but also, rather than going through extensive modifications of individual chapters, we think it'd be more beneficial to start implementing some of the recommendations in the master plan. So this document that you've received, and it was actually prepared, I think, back in November, and then the subsequent meetings that didn't happen have deferred it to this point. But basically, it outlines a number of the tasks in the master plan that call for actions or tasks to be undertaken. And so we're proposing to work on some of those things rather than going through rewriting a lot of text in the master plan. And so, uh, let's see. Can you go back a slide? No, I guess it doesn't have it. All right, in the, in your, uh, and I guess you'd call it a staff report for this item. There is a list of 13 items of possible update tasks that we came up with. And one of the things that we'll need to do sooner rather than later is decide which ones to undertake. Each of these items has a section in the, further down in the document with, that describes the specific policies and language that describe the problem and the tasks that need to be done. So I can go through them, just touch on them briefly. I won't go read them all and read policies and whatnot to you. But I'll just try to highlight the points that these 13 sections are trying to address. So number one is, as I mentioned, there's data that needs to be updated, especially in chapters one and two, which is population and, was it education? And chapter six as well. The second task is assessing changes to provide more housing opportunities. As you're all aware, we've had, we have a housing crisis. There have been big projects that have gotten approved, but they have not moved forward right away. There are some, perhaps some minor things that we might look into, such as small manufactured homes, tiny homes, accessory dwelling units, maybe make those more readily usable. Those are small steps that we can take, but ultimately, people need to actually implement them to help with the housing problem. One of the things that calls, the policies also call for is looking at the possibility of rezoning land near the utility systems to be higher density. So that's another thing we can look into. The second item, I'm sorry, the third item is assessing changes for streamlining childcare permitting. This is kind of related to the housing crisis. If we have more people living here, they're going to need childcare. There's not a lot of things that we can do directly, but we might be able to find ways to help the permitting of childcare facilities be easier. The next item is updating power facility regulations. There's a couple of policies relating to power facilities and geothermal. I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, there's one relating to geothermal, but that's a really minor one. The main issue is that power facilities, standard power facilities are not really regulated on the same footing as renewable energy facilities. So the policy recommends trying to fill that gap. In addition, there are some gaps in our renewable energy facilities regulations as well. For example, it covers wind energy, but it doesn't cover solar facilities. So kind of an odd gap that needs to be filled. Another item called out in the master plan is, provide adequate regulation for mineral, for mining facilities. So these can be large and broadly impacting like a renewable energy or solar farm. And so the policy calls out for establishing standards for mines that are on par with energy facilities. The next one is about incorporating public services and facilities policies into the code. The master plan has a batch of sewer and water goals and policies, and they're multiple pages long. They're almost to the point of being regulations in themselves. And so we need to look at what parts of those really should be regulations in the zoning code, and basically moving them. The next one is about the open space chapter. So the open space chapter was written in 2004 and then just kind of stuck wholesale into the master plan. And so it hasn't been updated since then. And so it's been, I guess, punted to not do anything with it in the intervening updates that we've done since 2004. And so this policy, this goal and its policies are recommending figuring out what to do with the open space chapter. It might be a bigger task than some of the others. The next item is looking at Chapter 12, which is the public policy for public lands. This is another chapter that hasn't been updated in a long time through multiple updates. So the staff is recommending that we hire our natural resources consultant, who is RCI. And so they have done other, similar chapters for other counties in the state. And so that'd be a good- would be a good solution to get this item done. The next item is updating county zoning districts. You just saw the card and Maryas Karina rezone, and that's an example of one of the problems we have with our zoning districts. They don't often represent what's actually going on in that part of the county that the zoning district covers. And so that was an example of C1 out in an area that's all developed for industrial uses. But we also have areas that are zoned commercial, but we have whole subdivisions sitting within them. We have areas zoned for A10 or A5 zoning that have smaller lot residential development in it. So it's kind of hard to have your use table in your zoning code work right when the zoning on the ground doesn't really make sense in some places. So there's a number of policies that deal with different situations in the master plan, and so one of the items would be to undertake a larger effort to look at the zoning districts and whether they make sense. Another item is the transfer of development rights. This probably would take quite a bit of work. We had a previous workshop with, I guess it was a joint workshop with the sending site committee, so there's a lot of discussion, a lot of different opinions about how to fix our transfer of development rights program. So that would be another task that we'd want to make some progress on. Another batch of policies have to do with updating the code for effective agricultural protections. As I mentioned before, a lot of the farmland's been converted to residential use, so there's probably things that we can do to improve the agricultural protections in the ag zone. Another item is the implementing the Hazen and Sewingel Bench policies in the code. So there are some very specific statements for the Hazen area, and so those need to be incorporated into code. The Hughes abandonment is one example of abandonment and reversion to acreage, is where you take those tiny lots created by the 1905 townsite map and try to merge them, get rid of some of the redundant roads, and make lands that are better suited to development. Right now, they're, they're so difficult, you can't really do anything with them. But there's a variety of policies and actions that are recommended in the master plan. The last item is what to do with a couple big areas that were, that were being, number of big areas that have ideas in mind for them, but we haven't figured out actually what to do with them. So we have the opportunity zone that was established five years or more ago, and that was, never worked very well, but there's a policy to do something with it. After all this time, it's kind of looking like maybe that's not something worth doing. And then on the other hand, we now have the Navy Range legislation that set up the lands bill, and so we're going to be getting a lot of, of the checkerboard area in the northwest part of the county. And so it's an opportunity to fix that checkerboarding problem. And so we need to be doing some planning for that whole process, including figuring out what the obstacles for developing those areas are. So that's a summary. I don't think we need to make a particular decision, but if you have questions, please let me know. In the coming months, I guess we need to zero in on which of these we want to tackle and start working on them. That's all I have.
Do you want to make a, are you looking to make a schedule tonight for like the first meeting?
No, it was just an orientation. And so perhaps at our next meeting, we can have a little discussion of which of these we'd like to undertake and maybe think about timelines.
Okay. And then the other information that's provided in this little packet, you want to elaborate exactly what its purpose is, just so everybody is in agreeance, that is these the ideas that you want to change?
In this document?
Yep.
Yeah, it covers basically what I was just talking about, but it provides the specific policies and, and then some background or recommendations for how to move forward with it.
So you're, you're finding all this information is the things that maybe we want to change or edit to some effect?
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Patterson? None heard, thank you. Agenda item 11, consent agenda. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, Zach Bunyard, my move to approve the consent agenda is submitted.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Bunyard, second by Commissioner Goings for approval of the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Agenda item 12, public comment. Is there any public comment? None heard. Agenda item, excuse me, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Agenda item 13, adjournment. The meeting is adjourned at 9:17 PM. Thank you.